Excuse me. Good evening. The May 4 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Harris.
Here. Ms. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: On April 27, 2023, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11 in the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Ms. Wolferman. Mr. De La Pietro, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Treibwasser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. The Board retires to closed session. We anticipate on being out around 6:30 p.m. Thank you for your patience. Please rise for a salute to the flag at a moment of silence.
.................................................................................
Good evening. My name is Daniel Harris. I'll be subbing in for Mr. Molnar, who could not be here this evening. I have a motion. Excuse me. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So motion.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser, a second by Mr. Sedana. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Carried. All right. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Harris.
Yes, here. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. For the 2023-24 school year, we opened the following bids on April 18, 2023, IFB 24-01 Athletic Supplies, and on May 4, 2023, IFB 24-02 Athletic Supplies.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wolferman. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of March 2023.
Thank you, Mr. President. I present the following monthly reports: Student registers and fire drill reports, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative, Erica Waguna. Erica, excuse me.
Erica Waguna is a senior at Woodbridge High School. Erica is a prime example of what a well-rounded student is. Academically, Erica will graduate in the top 2% of the class and has successfully completed numerous advanced placement and dual enrollment courses over the years. She is involved in countless school activities. Erica has been yearbook editor for the past three years and has been an instrumental piece of our athletic events by being our staple videographer and photographer over the past few years. Erica is a freshman mentor, ambassador, club guide, Heroes and Cool Kids ambassador, ICC member, ecology club member, and an Eldorado member. Erica has served as the vice president of the National Honor Junior Society and Chinese Honor Society since junior year. Erica was selected as a New Jersey Seed Scholar based on her academic performance and will be attending the University of Pennsylvania this fall to study cinema and media studies. We know this young lady will make Woodbridge proud. On a personal note, I got to hear her speech at the induction ceremony for the National Junior Honor Society, and it was absolutely phenomenal. Erica, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino and Board of Ed members for having me today. I'm very honored to be your student representative today. Starting with school number one, Quiver Farms delivered eggs, and all students were able to watch the eggs hatch. Multiple influential women came in and spoke about their careers. The Woodbridge High School track and softball team came in to speak as part of Women's History Month. Their monthly community of caring was dedicated to their Teacher of the Year, Ms. Dona Klein, and the Grand Faloons did an assembly on recycling. Next is school number four and five. Classes participated in activities for Women's History Month. Food was collected to support the Have a Heart Food Drive. Their school raised $8,500 for the Kid's Heart Challenge. Students that were exceptionally kind, good role models, and respectful earned lunch with the principal. Author Carmen Rubin visited their school, and the Lead U assemblies were held in March. Moving on to school number nine, the school raised over $4,000 for the Kid's Heart Challenge. Food was collected to support the Have a Heart Food Drive. They worked with the Woodbridge High School football team to complete a DEI STEAM project for Black History Month. Their school worked with the Colonia High School Interact Club to complete a DEI STEAM project for Women's History Month. All their classes were participating in various DEI and SEL activities for Women's History Month, World Language Week, and Autism Acceptance Month. The third graders did their egg drop projects with the help of the Port Reading and Avonel Fire Departments, and the fourth graders completed their work with the Avonel Middle School Sidekicks. Moving on to school number 11, the Woodbridge Township Police Department read to their first graders for Read Across America Week. The Grand Faloons did an assembly on recycling. The Woodbridge High School Safety Ambassadors assisted students with safety tips and practices. Women's History Month featured daily student readings, class projects, and Girl Who Code Meets... Students began collecting data on our school-wide DL and SEL project. The PTO hosted a Tricky Tray and a Family Bingo Night. The Spartan Boost Tutoring Club assisted students and families with homework and supplemental lessons. The Gardening Club hosted weekly meetings for their Sustainable New Jersey Project, and PBSIS Raffles ran on a biweekly basis to promote character development. School 14 did... The student council collected food to support the Have a Heart Food Drive. Students traveled to school number 25 to participate in DEI and SEL activities. The Student of the Month luncheon was held to honor the February students. Students showing kindness earned tickets as part of the PBSIS program, and all their classes were participating in various activities for Women's History Month. School number 19, students went to see the JFK High School senior play Wizard of Oz. Students collected food donations for the Have a Heart Food Drive. The PTO held their annual snowflake school dance. Read Across America was held with community leaders reading to their students. Their school nurse and physical education teacher organized the Kid's Heart Challenge, raising over $8,000. Women's History Month was celebrated with posters made by the students representing the accomplishments of women, and their PBSIS will be sponsoring a pizza bingo with their families. Moving on to school number 25, our school... Their school nurse and physical education teacher organized the Kid's Heart Challenge, raising $1,400. The student council collected food and raised $157 for a Have a Heart Food Drive. The Honor Society held a food drive to replenish of Middlesex County. Lead U assemblies were held in March. The Honor Society students read books to younger students about influential women in history for Women's History Month. School 14 participated with school 25 for SEL and DEI grade-level activities. The Grand Faloons presented an earth science assembly. And monthly PBSIS assemblies are held to recognize students being respectful, responsible, and kind. Ford's Middle School, Brad Butler presented at the Friday Success Program focusing on self-control. Fifteen students were inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. The World Cultures Club celebrated World Languages Week with a potluck dinner for students, family members, and their families and faculty. The district middle school band performed at the Acacia Center under the direction of the JFK and Colonia High School band directors. The March HISP A mentoring programs presenter was Abigail Santos, a graduate of Colonia High School who was studying to be a civil engineer at NJIT. The Performing Arts Concert was held on April 26, and the dance class performed an end-of-cycle presentation. At Woodbridge Middle School, their honors math students completed in the Continental Math League, and seven of their students earned top scores. Staff and students shaved their heads to raise over $6,000 for the St. Baldric Foundation. The Kids vs. Cops basketball game raised funds for the St. Baldric's Foundation. Their parent and community outreach committee hosted their first Families STEM Night. They partnered with JFK High School for the Narrative for Interschool Story Exchange, and the Parent and Community Outreach Committee is hosting a parent workshop titled Hidden in Plain Sight, designed to help students... Parents recognize unfamiliar hazards that are often in plain sight. At Woodbridge High School, students presented the musical Matilda with a special preview performance for the township's senior citizens. Mu Alpha Theta held their Honor Society induction. The World Language Department inducted students into the French, Spanish, and American Sign Language Societies. The World Language Department celebrated Foreign Language Week with students participating in a musical March Madness bracket, after-school activities, a door decorating contest, and multicultural lunches. The World Language Department competed in a fundraiser for International Women's Day, raising $200 to help women in need at a local women's shelter. A class trip to Grounds for Sculpture exposed students to art. A class trip to the Long Island Gold Coast allowed students to experience and understand the lifestyle they read about in The Great Gatsby. And the National Honor Society students made Valentine's Day cards for the residents at the New Jersey Veterans Memorial Home.
All right. Thank you very much.[706.00][706.00](APPLAUSE). Erica, congratulations on your acceptance and commitment to the University of Pennsylvania. Good luck and go Quakers. You're welcome to stay for the meeting if you'd like. Otherwise, I want to also recognize Mr. Osborne, the new principal at Woodbridge High School, for joining us this evening. Thank you.[729.69][729.69](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
Okay. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come up to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda and the item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. We welcome our first guest. If anyone has anything? No? Okay. Seeing none. Superintendent's agenda. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
Mr. President, I have 32 items to present to the Board.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the superintendent's agenda?
So motion.
All right. I have a motion for Mr. Treibwasser. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Policy and planning agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following 17 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson, and do I have a... Excuse me. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, and a second by Ms. Anderson. Excuse me, guys, my first time back in a while. All of... Do I have any comments or questions from the Board? I want to add my own comment here real quick, just recognizing item number 17. For those watching at home and for those in the audience this evening, we were fortunate enough with inclement weather this past winter, thus the three built-in inclement weather days will be exercised as per the previously printed calendar. Thus, we will have a five-day Memorial Day weekend beginning on Friday and concluding at the end of the day on Tuesday, followed by Monday, June 5, to capture a four-day weekend the following week. Dr. Massimino has promised that the district will be putting out communication with the township community and make sure parents are aware of those three date changes as previously advertised. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Curriculum agenda, Mr. Treibwasser.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Treibwasser. I have a motion for Mr. Treibwasser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Okay. Finance and insurance agenda, Mr. Treibwasser.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 33 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Treibwasser. I have a motion by Mr. Treibwasser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Treibwasser, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Any comments or questions from the Board? No? I can never resist. Just wanted to thank a number of our agenda items on the agenda here this evening. I'm not going to rattle them off, but they are shared services agreements with the township. That's a reflection of the hard work of our team. Dr. Massimino and Mr. Wolferman and the rest of his team, in continuation of longstanding shared services agreements with Woodbridge Township. These agreements, as the mayor often says, two different agencies, same constituency. We're doing this. We're doing these agreements to share resources for the benefit of the taxpaying public. The other agenda item I just wanted to recognize, tonight's a big night. As always, the Board of Education's have two main duties. They are to hire a superintendent, and the other is annually to pass a budget. This evening, we are passing our 2023-2024 fiscal budget. I want to thank Mr. Wolferman and his team for putting that together. Erica, all the hard work you guys put together year-long and the many questions that you answered for myself, Mr... Well, I won't even rattle off all the board members, but I'm sure many had one or more questions at some point during the process. And then I want to just shout out a couple items on the agenda from last week's presentation that Dr. Massimino presented. Couple things I think worth noting. We have a continuation of summer enrichment opportunities for elementary and middle school students, optional and others, not so optional for credit recovery purposes. I think that's a good thing. We're putting more money into capital projects. Many years before many of us on the Board got on this Board, previous Boards were reluctant to invest, or when they were investing, they were deferring capital projects. We've been catching up on capital projects for many years now. We're slowly catching up, and that's a kudos to our Buildings and Grounds team led by Mr. Impaglia, who's out in the hallway there. Thank you for investing those dollars into making our facilities warm, welcoming, and safe facilities. Next, near and dear to my heart, as well as my previous running mate, Board Member Tamborello, we were high on additional student assistance counselors. Our school counselors, they work on a variety of things, including but not limited to scheduling, helping plan for college, things of that nature. But our SAC counselors, they really take on some of those behavioral issues, whether it's bullying, or depression, or anxiety, things that young children are going through, dating issues, conflicts between friends, things of that nature. I think they're an invaluable resource to our district, and we have one at each high school, and then two are sharing the five middle schools. Under this budget led by Dr. Massimino, we're adding two additional SAC counselors. So I just want to recognize that. I'm very excited about that. And then last but not least, we're making a significant investment. Mr. Velez, I'm sure would concur with us, in our school security, hiring a significant amount of security guards, keeping our relationship with the Woodbridge Police Department. I won't get into details for the protection of our students, our faculty and staff, but I'm very pleased about that investment. We've been investing for years, and this is really kind of the... I don't want to call it the final piece, but a significant piece of the puzzle. So thank you for doing that, and I thank my board members for getting this budget done. And let's move on with the vote here. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
You know what? Before I do that, did anyone have anything to add to that? I know I... Anything on the budget? No? All right. Mr. Wolferman, please.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Thank you. Security and school safety agenda, Mr. Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Security and School Safety Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following two items, and I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. A motion by Mr. Velez, seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Thank you. Athletics and extracurricular, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following 21 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Excellent. I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Wow, you guys really wanted that one. I have a motion by Ms. Anderson, a second by... I'll give it to Mr. Sedana. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following two items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Sedana. I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana, seconded by Mr. Treibwasser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
I just want to... This is a reminder of gratitude. I believe the Buildings and Grounds Committee, as well as everyone under the Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, does a fine job of what they do, especially under the leadership of the new administration. Can't call them new anymore, can we?
Do you?
But under leadership of administration, I really appreciate the work that they do. I appreciate previous Boards that put away the money to do the work, the referendums, everything else that plays a part, but I do want to appreciate Buildings and Grounds for keeping up with the changes that are happening and will continue to happen in upgrades as well. So I have to appreciate the leadership and the work being done.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sedana. Any other comments? I wanted to add to that, Mr. Sedana, you mentioned the word referendum. Board last met on March 9, about five days later. We asked the voters of this township to go to the polls and support a referendum, very minor referendum, just transferring money from the previous designated site on Rowway Avenue back to Avonel Street to complete our promise to the voters regarding school four and five. The voters, thankfully, and we appreciate it on behalf of the Board, voted to approve that referendum question with a vote of 2,236 voting in the affirmative, 573 voting against. So on the Board agenda this evening, item number two is we're issuing a contract to our engineer and architect of record, Parat Samjin, to begin and complete the renderings and the design of the major rehabilitation and renovation of school four and five. I believe, Mr. Wolferman, you had said, based on the design, going through Department of Education approval, we would see maybe construction start around January, the earliest, in terms of issuing a construction bid, opening the bids, and beginning construction. So it may be quiet for some time, but things are in the works. The paperwork is being done, if you will. Did I have that correct, Mr. Wolferman?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you very much. All right. Any other comments? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treibwasser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Transportation, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following 21 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
The Cafeteria Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. DeLaPietro. I have a motion by Mr. DeLaPietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana, seconded by Mr. Trebowiser. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir.
I just want to, this is a reminder of gratitude. I believe the Buildings and Grounds Committee, as well as everyone under the Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, does a fine job of what they do, especially under the leadership of the new administration. Can't call them new anymore, can we?
Two years.
But under leadership of administration, I really appreciate the work that they do. I appreciate previous boards that put away the money to do the work, the referendums, everything else that plays a part. But I do want to appreciate Buildings and Grounds for keeping up with the changes that are happening and will continue to happen and upgrades as well. So I have to appreciate the leadership and the work being done.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Sedana. Any other comments? I wanted to add to that, Mr. Sedana, you mentioned the word referendum. Board last met on March 9. About five days later, we asked the voters of this township to go to the polls and support a referendum, very minor referendum, just transferring money from the previous designated site on Rowway Avenue back to Avonel Street to complete our promise to the voters regarding school four and five. The voters, thankfully, and we appreciate it on behalf of the board, voted to approve that referendum question with a vote of 2,236, voting in the affirmative, 573 voting against. So on the board agenda this evening, item number two is we're issuing a contract to our engineer and architect of record, Kharid Samjin, to begin and complete the renderings and the design of the major rehabilitation and renovation of school four and five. I believe, Mr. Wolferman, you had said, based on the design, going through Department of Education approval, we would see maybe construction start around January the earliest in terms of issuing a construction bid, opening the bids, and beginning construction. So it may be quiet for some time, but things are in the works. The paperwork is being done, if you will. Did I have that correct, Mr. Wolferman? All right, great. Thank you very much. All right. Any other comments? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowiser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Transportation, Mr. DeLaPietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following 21 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. DeLaPietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. DeLaPietro, seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowiser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Cafeteria, Mr. DeLaPietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Cafeteria Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. DeLaPietro. I have a motion by Mr. DeLaPietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. DeLaPietro, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowiser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Personnel Agenda, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following 32 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir.